So I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board to order. And please note attendance Denise. Nice to see you here tonight. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few items on our consent agenda tonight. Couple added on the revised agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval?
Moved in second. Julie's second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okey dokey. Student reps. Courtney Elijah.
Hi, I'm Courtney and I have the clubs report for the month. So ASP, which is the leadership group run by Johnny Faro, held the annual Queen of Hearts Dance this weekend, which was a huge success and a great time for students. We are now continuing to work on planning for the Mr. S.H.S. pageant, which is a fundraiser for Medical Teams International. The Red Cross Club led by Kirsten Barnes is preparing to help with their Red Cross' smoke alarm program on February 28th. The 97305 zip code of Salem, east of Shemekina, is one of the top 10 in Oregon for fire-related deaths and injuries. Our students are working together to replace and install smoke alarms with local community leaders. The Red Cross Club is also continuing work on their pillowcase projects. The theater run by Doug Osterhout is rehearsing and preparing for their spectacular production of Alice in Wonderland. Their show will premiere on Thursday, February 26th, and then show that weekend and the following weekend. The band run by Frank Patrick is preparing pieces for their upcoming festival season. The flyer led by Jennifer Kircher is also preparing for their festival season and will be holding a fundraiser called the Cabaret on March 11. The key club led by Megan Miller is meeting and preparing for future community service events. FFA run by Scott Towery is preparing for leadership CBEs that will take place on February 18th. They also have members practicing for creed speaking welding competitions and advanced prepared public speaking competitions. In the recent Ag show, Senior Ben Zollinger placed first in the trailer as well as the restoration category. Sam Kushnick placed first in the Ag machinery category and Brendan Hari placed second in the restoration category. And that's all I have.
And I'm Elijah Nielsen. Time for your athletic report. So wrestling, the wrestling team has been intensely training. The young team has been learning the true meaning of hard work, but they have been right into the occasion. The more experienced wrestlers are aware of the training process and have high spirits because they know that the peaking process, a time when the workload lightens and the boys are given a chance to both physically and mentally prepare for the competition, is right around the corner. This last week was rough with injuries and skin infections troubling our team. However, with the help of our trainer, we expect all the boys to be back on the mat and ready to compete by the district tournament. Some of the athletes to look for near the top of the podium at districts are Junior Boston Maryfield, Sophomore Tristan Lanier, Junior Austin Reed, Sophomore Nathan Butch, Junior Braden Sinns, Senior Cody Gools, and Senior Cameron Clokey. Boys basketball team currently has a combined 21 record in the league. The varsity Foxes are currently 7-0 in the league and ranks fourth in the state. The three leading scorers for the Foxes are underclassmen, Juniors Danny Larnock, Sam Roth, and Sophomore Julian Downey. Much of the team's success however should be attributed to the senior leadership as the Foxes have seven seniors. The toughness especially on defense has been emulated by the rest of the team. The Foxes currently rate second among 5A teams for scoring defense. Now girls basketball. The girls are currently ranked ninth overall in the OSA rankings. They are killing it also with an overall record of 11-7. Their next game is this Wednesday at 7:00 PM against Crescent Valley. Come out and score early at Foxes. Swimming. Both the boys and girls swim teams ended up 3-3 this year. They both had victories over Central in Dallas. The girls had a victory over South Albany. The boys had a victory over Crescent Valley. Top performers going in the districts are Jaden Davis, 50 and 100 free, Cole Hackett, 100 fly, Aiden Kraus, 100 black. They're back, sorry. Numbers are dropped a bit due to illness, injury. Still have 44 swimmers that are working and looking to improve. Hope to see new PRs at the district. Dance team. We are into our state qualification season with about two-thirds of our state piece choreographed and set on the team. We are attending our first competition with this dance this weekend, February 7th in State. Hoping to get some valuable feedback from the judges. First round begins 11, the second round is at 2. Go Foxes, Dan. And that concludes our report. Thank you so much.
Any questions for these guys before they're out the door? Okay, thank you guys. Good report. Very thorough, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to audience with visitors. As always, if you want to address the board, please keep your comments to five minutes or under. And with that being said, would anyone like to address the board tonight? Gene? Wasn't sure you were getting up or what you're gonna do.
Would it be the after the pervy? Thanks for being here and allowing people to speak. I noticed that on the agenda tonight there's no discussion about these new school issues, which is still a big issue in the public's eye. So I'm wondering if I could ask a question or two of what is going on? Is the board up to date on what's happening?
Yeah, there is actually. Mr. Blando's gonna share Slater Project draft calendar during his reports. So that's where we're... Since we passed the resolution last month, we're moving forward and we're... Things are starting to move forward, but that's what we have tonight is just the draft calendar of how things are gonna progress.
Okay, so I'll speak to that. My concern is that we're moving the students from a building that has safety problems into other two buildings that have safety problems that are probably equal or greater. To check out my analysis, I personally went up to look at Mark Twain. If you look at the wings that go north and south, the west windows and the east windows, there's absolutely no shear in those walls, so it's relying on the posts and the glass. And the glass is framed in aluminum frames. It's not in vinyl frames like it is over Eugene Field School. So if we had a significant earthquake, that glass is going to blow out is what's going to happen. It just is, how is it going to provide the resistance without any other shear wall to take that up? The building is old. It's not attached well to the foundation. It's not attached well to the roof assembly. All of these things are relative to how a building's going to fail. In terms of the buildings, the east wing and the west wing at the Slater campus, those buildings suffered during the quake of 93. That was very minor. The main big building in the core didn't show any stress. There's no cracks observable whatsoever. So we're going to move students into this area where we don't have anything in the budget to take care of that. I think a number that I came up with was maybe seven and a half million if we were to really take care of things relative to what you're doing, even the module frames or the units, five units if that's still the case. So here we are shifting around. We have presentations that were made. They were validated by construction and other local design people. We could do something that would involve the rural schools as well. It's just this minimal thing that's trying to happen here at Slater and at Mark Twain. And the board hasn't taken any effort whatsoever to look at those. One would be 10 million. One would be for a new school even, possibly 16 million. So I'm saying to you that I feel that really let down that you folks don't look at that. You don't look at it at all. You just skip from this to that and say, oh, you're right, Andy, that we shouldn't be doing anything other than digging a hole and crawling in it and looking out and then we'll just make do with minimum stuff. That's gonna go on then for years if we do it. So I'm appealing to you to think about what you're doing. Three out of four of you said, no, don't do this, or let's reconsider. So four of you are moving ahead with something that the population voted at 57 percent. No, don't tear down Slater. No, don't move out of, necessarily out of Eugene Field School, but don't do this. So we have nothing at all that is a referendum that says or a mandate to do what's happening. And I know you don't like listening to me, but I'm gonna keep talking until something gets heard. I don't really understand the resistance in this board. I did take the time to look up when I was most of the time chairman of the Budget Committee for 25 years or so. And I went back to, I'm wondering why there's this fight between Andy and I. I'm sure he doesn't like me coming and debating with him, but the facts is that I was involved and I've been well-trained in this system here. And when he made proposals when he was the head of a group at the high school, I didn't pick the first year. I took the second year. I kept all my old budgets.
Thirty seconds, Gene.
Thank you. I've kept all my budget documents. And I opened up the page that he was in charge of to look to see if I was remembering something wrongly that John Thompson and I used to talk about. People would come unprepared. And it said, and one of the simple words you said, prioritize. So we have not prioritized. We've gone for 37 million, 25 million. Now we have an opportunity to do something that's tangible and we're not doing it.
Okay, time's up, Gene. Thanks. Any questions for Gene? Okay, Gene, I do wanna make one comment. You commented that the board hadn't taken any time to look at any of the proposals that were put forth. We took a lot of time to look at proposals. We've been looking at proposals for the last two years. And I remember sitting over at a meeting at the high school library when we looked at the proposal that you brought forward. And we had people analyze that and look at that. And we spent a lot of time working on this. And you may disagree with that. I thought we had, you may, and I'm sure you do, I'm sure you disagree with my opinion, but we have taken a lot of time to look at all this stuff. So, thanks, Gene.
Tim, you didn't do anything to look at what the three parties, the two architects and the engineer produced. We have letters from them.
Yeah, Gene, we looked at, I'm not gonna argue with you. We looked at all this stuff and the board came to a majority decision.
You did not look at it. You relied on Tim Collins who is smoking mirrors. And you did not look at it. You didn't talk about it. So this is all gonna come back to you.
Tim Collins is a reporter for the Silverton Appeals. Anyone else? Okay, we have another audience, the visitors later on. Moving on to discussion items. We have some more policy revisions. They're all first readings. We'll just go through them one by one. JF/JFA, student rights and responsibilities. Anything on this one?
Andy, most of these, pretty much all these we're gonna look at tonight. Looks like just minor word changes and...
They are, and they're based upon legislation.
Okay.
Nothing on the first one? JG, student discipline. Okay, JHCD, non-prescription medication. Good. JHCD-A, prescription medication. Anything? Okay, they were all pretty straightforward. Second discussion item, draft 2015-2016 school calendar. This is an action item later tonight. We'd like to get this approved so people kinda know what's gonna be happening next year. Pretty straightforward calendar again. At our last work session, we saw two examples, one with a before Labor Day start and one with an after Labor Day start. And this is the after Labor Day start that we're looking to approve tonight. So, any comments? Questions? Andy, did you hear from the associations?
I heard from both associations and they had no additional input.
Okay, okay. Okay, full day kindergarten beginning September 2015. Linda gave us a great discussion about this at our last work session. That's in our packet. We also have a resolution. Owen suggested that the board come up with a resolution to show our full support for this. So that's gonna be an action item tonight too. That resolution was in our packet. Any discussion on it?
I mentioned it last time, but I'll say it again, that I'm not thrilled about doing this, but I think there's a lot of value when small children have the ability to come home and spend time with their family. And I think it's a better nurturing environment. However, because of the new standards, I don't see any way that these students can meet the standards that have been set before us without going to an all-day kindergarten.
I'll read the resolution before we vote on it later, at our action item. Is there any other discussion on it tonight? Okay. May 19th, there's a board member election, May 19th election, excuse me. We have four positions that are gonna be open. And tonight is the chance for our board members to see whether they're gonna run again for another term. We have David in zone six, Tom in zone seven, Julie in zone one, and Owen in zone three. And all those terms expire June 30th. So, start down at Owen's end. Owen, what are your intentions?
Well, I'll start and say that regrettably I've moved and I'm no longer in that zone. And I'm not in a zone that is up for election, so I won't be able to run in the next cycle.
Okay.
So the answer is yes.
You're going to, you plan on running again?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless something happens to change my mind, I guess I do have that option, but...
Okay. Tom?
Yep, I'm in.
I like enthusiasm. Julie?
I've moved as well and won't be running again.
Okay, okay. So we have openings in zone one and zone three. And Andy, when are the filing deadlines?
According to the Marion County Elections website, the filing deadline is between February 7th into March 12th.
Okay. For current board members and any... Yeah, David and Tom also.
Correct.
Yeah, we have.
To file again. Okay. Okay, so anybody in the audience, you may wanna pass that along if you know of anybody interested in running for the board. Any other discussion items? Okay, staff reports. Andy, Slater Project Draft Calendar Educator of the Year recipients.
I placed in front of you a draft copy of the action plan and timeline for the Slater campus. And again, it's early. It's in draft form. And it's, it contains really the main items that, short of coming from the style and the specificity you would expect of an architect or a person, a specialist about leading the project, this does give the primary items that will occur over the course of the next 19 months. Taking a look at the February timeline, we've already requested the traffic impact study from the city of Silverton. We've already met with staff members of Eugene Field and Robert Frost Schools. And we have Mark Twain slated for next week. We have published the architect request for qualifications and had a very healthy interest in it and had a number of submissions. Joel is working very well in facilitating that process. And we have some finalist interviews mid-week, this week. And you'll have a recommendation at your work session coming up on the 23rd for architect selection. Once the architect is on board, then many of the remaining tasks will center around that individual, that group, as we move ahead specific to the campus. Otherwise, the additional items there are, you know, to give you some direction about what things are expected to look like. The agriculture and industrial arts building on the Slater campus, we're moving ahead with that. We've done our hazardous material assessment on that building. And Joel will be handling that, will be handling that as a district as well, rather than turning that over to the architect because that's a cost savings measure. It's something that we can handle within our staff. So that will be scheduled to begin before the end of March. And we anticipate that will be completed over a short period of time. Other items for your interest and for the public interest, the traffic study report. While we don't have a final deadline on that based upon conversation with the city, we anticipate that to occur by the middle or late April. And that will be a report directly to you. And the additional discussion specific to project funding structure related to a loan to be secured needs some additional conversation. And you need some opportunity to determine what is in your best interest. And we're seeking information on that right now from a variety of options for securing that funding. And then otherwise, the remaining items are communication, which will be ongoing, project continuation over the 15-16 school year. And then of course, school transitions would occur during the summer of 2016 and project completion by August 31st of 2016.
Regarding the old ag chop, was there any work done to see if we can recycle or reclaim some of the lumber out of that building?
Joel will actually be publishing the requests for submissions that will include, you may have to help me with the words Joel, demolition and...
Deconstruction.
Deconstruction. So you have some flexibility in time in order to not only have the items in there, say repurposed or reused.
It'll be part of the bidding process.
It'll be a cost savings measure as well.
Questions for Andy on this? Okay, thanks, Andy.
And then second to that, I'm pleased to announce our annual winners for classified employees of the year and teachers of the year. For the high school, we have Dan McGee, Campus Security at the high school. Middle school is Mary Dixon, our cook at Victor Point School. And elementary school is Kristen Norris, Special Needs Assistant at Eugene Field School. Teachers of the year include Steve Roth, Social Studies Teacher at the high school, Daniel Jamza, Middle School Teacher at Mark Twain, Science Teacher and Elementary Teacher. We actually have two elementary teachers this year, Stephanie Lovren of Eugene Field and Sheri Bean from Robert Frost. And as an added bonus, we're pleased to announce that Jim Bruckner, our longtime veteran teacher at Silverton High School, 41-plus years, was selected as lifetime achievement recipient by the Silverton Chamber of Commerce for all of his efforts over four decades. That's a big bonus. So congratulations to each of them.
That's a great list. Let's give them all a hand. Can come and honor them at the First Citizens Banquet on February 28th.
Correct.
Scott, financial report.
Yes, you, in your package, you've received a financial report on yellow paper showing the operating statement, general fund for the period of 1201 through 1231 and year-to-date, as well as the general fund by school, both subject and non-subject to carryover, and the fund balance is reported. The budgetary development timeline, it's kinda hard to believe it's budget time already, but we're using a process that's very similar to prior years. The building principals will get their allocations in about two and a half, three weeks. And at the macro level, we're developing budget scenarios for three levels of funding. As you might recall, the governor's budget had proposed a $6.9 billion education budget. And the Joint Ways and Means Committee has come in with about $7.2, $7.24 billion for the biennium. And so we're using those two figures plus the possibility of a $7.5, $7.6 billion funding level. So we'll take a look at what those effects are going to have on everything from staffing level to roll up costs and give you a broad overview at your next board work session, I believe, on the 23rd is when we're gonna have that finished. We're doing that on a statewide, all the districts and the state are doing that as well for, as requested by OSBA and COSA.
Questions for Scott? Okay, thank you, Scott. Bob and Heidi Ostrom, Evergreen School.
District goal, students not missing more than three days in any three-month period. This is a year to build our database, so there's not much information I'm gonna give you about that. But I want you aware as going around that staff and administrators in the district have made it a priority item. And these are a few of the ways that we've gotten the buildings are working and improving attendance. So, moving right along. Evergreen School, we're busy preparing for the retirement of career-long Evergreen teacher Patty Potter. She's been a tremendous asset at Evergreen and the community absolutely adores her.
How many years?
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
There aren't words. I don't know how we're gonna replace her, but... In the meantime, we've appointed Casey Murphy, the sixth, seventh, eighth grade teacher, will become the new head teacher at Evergreen. And Patty's position, we have now advertised and hope to begin working the end of the month, starting interviews. We'll involve parents and staff. And for those that are interested, we have her retirement celebration will be scheduled June 8th at 7:00 at the school. And there are, I don't know how many people involved in that.
Well, what we can tell you is the planning committee is working very hard to bring as many members of our very first class, 41 years ago, to ensure that as many as possibly can will be in attendance, along with, of course, all of the families that are attached to those individuals. And then each class down the way. So 41 years worth of students, that's quite a few. I think the place will be full inside and out. We're hoping the weather will be nice enough to hold it outside.
It's, she is such an invaluable part of the whole community. She's amazing. If we need something, she can pick up the telephone and go, I know who can do that.
And I think she's in her third generation of students. So, you know, if there's an issue, she has no difficulty calling a family member to say, you know, I had this issue with your parents as well, and here's how we solved it back then. And they have such tremendous and well-earned respect for Patty. She's tremendous. And she, even as she's teaching class on a day-to-day basis, will answer the telephone and solve problems because she has so much history there that she's got really the answers ready before the questions are even asked. So it's going to be a big pair of shoes to fill for Casey. And we are busy as a staff looking at ways to kind of resort what the head teacher does. Patty, over 41 years, has assumed a lot more responsibility probably than she needed to have. And Casey Murphy, while he'll do a great job, will not be able to fill all of the needs that she has over the years. So it's a big project, an exciting one. It's keeping us busy.
Can we hand these out right now?
Give me just a minute.
Okay.
Yeah. We thought you might enjoy hearing that Barb Parsons' class, first, second graders this year in December, packed a soft-sided suitcase to the gills with school supplies, small toys and trinkets. And it went to Nicaragua...
Ethiopia.
Oh, sorry, Ethiopia in December for children there. So that was a big project for them. Barb does such a tremendous job with respect for others, caring. And this was just one of the many ways that she addresses that with her class.
Now?
Now. About Me is a very important unit of study at Evergreen for the Evergreen kindergarten class. It spans from January, so it's just started, and it goes until kindergarten graduation in June. And the Evergreen kindergarten students learn all about themselves from birth to career choices and community leader options. They weigh and measure, read and write. They make observations. They draw. They weigh and measure, read and write, they make observations, they draw, paint, design, predict, make life-size models of themselves, and deliver, develop and deliver poetry selection, and then About Me report as a culminating activity. Now Bob here is holding, and you're passing around, David, that's perfect right there.
That's been a lot of time doing that.
These are life-sized, accurately weighted babies of each of the kindergarten students at Evergreen. They're based 100% on how each kindergartner looked and weighed and measured at the times of their birth. Students interviewed their parents to gather important vital statistics of themselves from their birth. They filled, the babies are filled, and the kindergarteners did this, with rice, and for the heavier ones, they used pea gravel. How heavy was the biggest one? Nine pounds, some ounces, and she is one of the tiniest kindergarteners at school. And they weighed and re-measured, measured and re-measured, and made corrections on these bodies to make sure that every dimension and the weight was perfect compared to their own birth size. Next, the birth pictures were used to depict each of the children's facial figures, features, and you can see in the little booklets, personal descriptions and statistics that have been carefully gathered and recorded, sentences that have been written, and memories shared. In June now, each kindergartner will be ready to deliver an oral report to the rest of the class on him or herself, including plans for what I want to be when I grow up. And then they will produce life-sized figures of themselves, and those will be decorated with the uniforms and typical garb of whatever they choose. And then they will attend graduation with the children. At the end of all that, the children will take possession of their Me babies, their current figures, and all of the work that they compiled in these booklets. Take a good look at those. This is work that kindergarteners are doing. You can see parents started it, teacher adds to it, but the kindergarten students by the end will be doing virtually all of the writing and standing up in front of their class to give an oral report. It's quite impressive, and it's a lot of fun to see happening. Can we answer any questions for you?
Those are great. Your kindergarten teacher does a great job of that.
Michelle Buckley is a tremendous teacher, and she finds all kinds of ways to kind of weave the core standards into her instruction and pulling in kind of traditional activities. So, yeah.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Wonderful stuff. Nice to see you both.
Thank you. It's great to meet you.
Kirsten?
Sandra Paul, I got nothing.
Nope, no props, no nothing, huh?
I tried to talk Austin into coming up, I was just sitting by. All right, Robert Frost, lots to celebrate. Andy already talked about Sherry Bean winning the Teacher of the Year, which is very well-deserved. It was great, because we really shocked her. She was like eating, we had breakfast thing in the, at our staff meeting, and she was like taking a bite, Marie announces her name, she started crying. It was great. It was really, it was a great recognition for her, and she is very deserving of that. So that was great. She's kind of a quiet leader, you don't see that in her until you really get to her. So she deserves that. Battle of the Books is hot and heavy right now at Robert Frost. Jackie Renaud is amazing. She, we had ninety-nine Robert Frost students start out Battle of the Books this year, which is about a quarter of our students, and it's intense. They get pretty into it. She is very excited, and I think she helps bring the students in, because she really gets them excited about reading. Read-a-thon, also something Jackie's got going on, we start February 13th, goes through more seconds. Last year, we made about $7,300 in the Read-a-thon. This year, it's going for more technology, iPads, apps for students for the iPads, nonfiction books and more. Of course, there's lots of incentives for them, teachers getting, eating Jell-O, getting a pie in the face, the principal kissing something. They haven't shared what that would be, so we'll see. I'm sure that'll be good. A big celebration for us is our team, RoboFrost, is a robotics team. We started robotics program this year. Terrence Hawley is one of our parents, and he works for Garmin, and so he's got this amazing talent of understanding robotics. I can't tell you how many times I went to Butte Creek, watched a practice, talked to Stacy Boost, she's trying to explain stuff to me, and it wasn't, it's not my area of expertise, but Terrence took it on, and he is doing a great job. We also have Zeb Schweigert, who is one of Butte Creek's coaches, helping out, volunteering to get our program going. They had a competition this weekend in Dallas against fifteen teams, mostly sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and they brought home the Excellence Award, which is a combination of all the, their nuclear engineering presentation, an engineering notebook, and their robot challenges. So they're doing a great job. The last competition, they won the teamwork award, and I told one of the students, "I'm really proud of you for the Excellence Award. The teamwork's a pretty big deal, because learning teamwork is important." And he said, "It's really hard to work together when you're trying to win, but we're able to do it." So it's, they get it, it's not easy. And then I actually got an email today from the person who put on the competition at Dallas, and he said, to all the schools, he wrote, "I have to commend Team RoboFrost for their excellent programming and their well-roundedness in winning the Excellence Award." So that was, that was a good, good to hear. And again, Stacy Boost and the Butte Creek team has really helped us to get off the ground, so that's been good. This year, we've started our more student-of-the-month assemblies. We started last year. This year, we're kind of spreading it out where there's a PE-focused assembly, a guidance-focused, music and such, and so the specials teachers get to give the awards for the students of the month. So January, we had PE month. Mr. Gary taught all the students to dance during the week, that week, last week before the end of January, and then during the assembly, all the students stood up to dance, and the teachers didn't know what was going to happen. And so when Mr. G told the kids to stand up, you could see the look of sheer fear on the teachers' faces as 400 students stood up in the gym. But they did a great job. Most students were, almost all the students were dancing, and some of the teachers even joined in, and the parents that were there, so that was really fun. Jake Garrick's been a great addition to our, to our school with his expertise in PE and getting kids working hard and interested in being active, so that's been great. Our focus, of course, SPAC, OPa, Oak Science, it's kind of the testing season, and just getting, being able to balance everything, getting teachers ready, students ready. Peter Bellamy and Kristy Sander have offered some really great training for our teachers to kind of help ease the anxieties about the new test, so that's been really great. We're really excited. We have a new assistant who actually is Zeb Schweigert. I knew that's why Kevin's here, he's making sure I'm not going to try to totally swipe Zed from Butte Creek, but we've hired him for three hours a day to help with our upper-level advanced math students. And so he's working with fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, our higher-level students, providing some math support. So that's been really great to get them moving forward, because they're ready to go, and it's been hard when there's not a lot of extra assistant time, but we've been able to make that work. And I noted here, the students refer to him as a math magician, because he's just like this math expert. So that's, he's been a great, and the kids really enjoy him. They call him a math magician, or Mr. Cyburns, depends on. He's really connecting well with the kids, and he's been a really good addition to our staff. Attendance, focusing on attendance, teachers doing classroom awards. We also do a top attendance award each month, so at each grade level, one class who has the highest percentage rate, they get a banner to hang on their door, and then it's an extra prize. So either it's an extra fun PE, game day and guidance, tech time with Mrs. Renaud, and so it's been kind of good, just to get the word out that attendance is important and having those conversations with kids. We also have attendance mentors, so students who aren't meeting that goal, there, we have about twelve staff members that have eight to ten students they meet with every day. So the students come in the morning, check in, got a little clipboard with a calendar, and they make, check off green if they're there, and then they kind of can see how they're there, if they're there or not. And then at the end of the week, we've got this little prize bucket, pencils, erasers, you know, little Oriental Trading Company toys that they get really excited about. So they get to pick a prize out of the bucket if they're there on time every day, and it gets students excited about, just kind of that in-between that might not make it, maybe I'm going to be sick today, and then they know they have a goal, and there's someone there that's waiting for them and greeting them, and some kids just need that. So that's been really great for our students.
Have you seen results with that?
We have. We have one young lady who, I think we figured out her last year, she was like eighty-two percent attendance, if I remember right. She's at 100% right now.
Wow, no, good.
And it could be a lot of factors, but she, if you ask her like about coming in every morning, she comes in, she gets there a little bit early, she gets to go in the building where the other kids don't until the bell rings, and she gets to go in and check with her mentor, and her mentor and have a little conversation, and it's making a difference. So I mean, that's one example. There's other kids who've made a big improvement, and then there's some kids that were working really hard, and for whatever reason, we have a student whose family's going to Alaska for two months on family vacation, dad's working up there, I mean, it's, that's a hard one, because that's, you know, they're not going to leave a nine-year-old home alone. So just having a conversation with parents about if there's a way we can help work with them to not let this happen, or if there's things they do to keep the student engaged while he's gone. A teacher's not going to do two months' worth of homework, but just, you know, we're doing our best to encourage kids, and if any parents need support sometimes, and getting the students there, and they're asking for that too, so.
Have you had the opposite effect too, where kids come to school sick? And there's been a lot of sickness going around last month or so.
Yeah, we've been really, I mean, I think the whole time, Chris, our nurses sent out a lot of things, sent newsletters about, you know, if you have the flu, if you have a fever, don't come. We haven't, I don't, I haven't seen that as big kids, like, "I have to be there because I'm going to..."
Yeah.
We do have kids come to school sick, but I don't know if that's, we're not pushing them to come to school sick, and, yeah, there's a lot going on. As far as my strategic visioning plan report, my goal to focus on was 100% of teachers will meet or see the district's data for student engagement. Looks like students actively working than, rather than watching while their teacher works, kind of like Bob and Heidi, we're getting that baseline, that baseline data this year. Couple of things that we are doing, we have our teacher cadre, which is about sixteen teachers working to provide professional development, either via staff meetings. Sherry Bean and Jenny Maske are our teachers on the teacher cadre, and they do a lot in our staff meetings, helping teachers with some teacher, some student engagement strategies, and then observations, they're going into classrooms and doing observations, having conversations with them after. They've been going to the trainings with us, with Jori Ellis over in Independence, we've been doing, and so they're been able to be in part of those conversations. Linda just created a instructional strategy book that the teachers all got for some, during from our teacher cadre presentation, and provides some strategies. And then our observation data, when you look at engaging students and learning, about 35% of our teachers have been scored on student engagement, and with our new evaluation system, we're collecting data through the observations, and that's just kind of where we are right now in the process.
Very good. Questions?
Okay. What's the teachers' reactions to these changes we're doing in evaluation, different structure?
I think it's just, I mean, there's a little anxiety about it, because it's new, it's different. I think they like it once we get to the, really, the data is good to have, like, this is what we're seeing, it's not the objective part of it. I mean, the subjective part, it's very, this is what it is, this is what I saw in the classroom. And so I think it's good to, most people can see that. It's been, I feel well-received at my school.
Good.
It's a different way of looking at it, but I feel like it's better. I mean, it's learning it right now, learning the process is tricky, and it's a different way of doing it, but I think that you got, the outcome is going to be good once we get it under our belts. The training's been really good, that Jori Ellis does for us, it's very good training, so it's been good.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chris. Any board reports this evening? Correspondence? I don't think we've had any, have we? Second audience with visitors, would anyone else like to address the board this evening? Nobody? Okay. Moving on to action items. Approve the 2015-2016 school calendar. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, school calendar passes. Second action item, consideration of resolution number two slash nine slash 2015 authorizing full-day kindergarten beginning the 2015-2016 school year. I think I'll probably go ahead and read this, just for the benefit of the public. Whereas the Silver Falls School District currently offers half-day kindergarten for its students, and whereas the administration and Board of Education believe that by providing our students with the tools to become 21st century learners at their earliest stages of development is beneficial for their educational, social, and emotional growth, and whereas one of these tools is a longer school day for kindergarten students where educational concepts can be taught and reinforced in a more, in a more meaningful manner, and whereas studies comparing half-day and full-day kindergarten shows that students greatly benefit from an age-appropriate full-day kindergarten program in terms of early academic achievement, and whereas research also demonstrates that full-day kindergarten provides students with an academic foundation which is vital to their future success, and which also reduces the need for remedial assistance or grade retention in the future. And whereas funding for full-day kindergarten is included in the 2015 to 2017 budget for K-12 public education in Oregon, whereas the Silver Falls School District wishes to join other school districts in Oregon that realize the benefits of full-day kindergarten and are planning for implementation by the 2015-2016 school year, now therefore be it resolved, the pending, the pending funding from the state of Oregon, the Silver Falls School District Board of Education hereby adopts a full-day kindergarten program for its students commencing in the 2015-2016 school year, and be it further resolved, the superintendent and administrative staff are hereby directed to take all steps necessary to effectuate this program at each school district with kindergarten. Okay. Is there a motion?
So, Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval.
Second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you. That's all we have tonight, so we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Wow.